Good evening, everyone. We're, uh, we're gonna start this, uh, the ceremony. Before we begin the ceremony, I'd like to call up, uh, Supreme Court Justice P. Neville Scott, P. Scott Neville Jr., uh, who will administer the oath and then we will start our meeting. So at this time, I will call up Supreme Court Justice P. Scott Neville Jr. to administer the oath of office.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Mayor, are you ready for me to administer the oath of office to you?
As soon as the First Lady comes up the other end.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
Aye, Thaddeus Jones.
Do solemnly swear
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Mayor
Duties of the Office of Mayor.
Of the City of Calumet City
City of Calumet City.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, here in Bennington.
God is good. I would like to call the meeting, the special meeting of the City of Calumet City, to order. At this time, we're gonna say the invocation. Uh, I will ask Alderman Gardner to introduce Pastor, uh, who will say the invocation.
This time, uh, we would have, uh, Portland Stokes, Pastor Portland Stokes.
Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, on this historic day, we are more aware than ever in this global pandemic that our times are in your hands. We stand in this place asking for your presence and power to be displayed in our affairs. We need your unity and love to captivate our hearts and to give us discernment and direction to the choices we make. We need your wisdom to guide us. We need your spirit to lead us so that you can bring honor to your name. We know that you are with Mayor Thaddeus Jones and that you are with us. And so we believe that it is not by might nor by power, but by your spirit, that a change is coming to Calumet City. We pray for every leader and authority that you have set. And we ask that you direct their hearts, that they would recognize where true strength and courage come from. You have declared in your word that you put one down and raise up another. This election is evidence of your will. So we thank you for what you have done. Allow Mayor Jones to keep his heart of service even when some do not want to be served. Empower him to keep a mouth filled with peace when his critics are harsh and many stand in opposition. Father, you have shown us in your word that excellent leadership demands good character. So we thank you for Thaddeus's heart, his integrity, and his commitment to public service. Keep him principled in this day when others would prefer to take the shortcut and have it their way. Give him a vision for a future and keep his mind on public service and not politics as usual. We ask that you guard his coming and going, that you be his refuge and peace. We pray that you surround him with wise counsel and that he remains humble and kind, loving in his actions and words. And we pray for his family, protection and strength for the days ahead. And we ask that you raise up men and women to serve this city. We pray that you open doors for this city that no one can shut. We pray that you close the doors that need to be closed that no one can open. Wake us up, God, and remind us that the time is short and now is time to make a difference. Bring honor to your name, for you alone are worthy. Give Mayor Thaddeus Jones strength for today and a bright hope for tomorrow. In Jesus's name we pray.
Now we will have the swearing-in ceremony of our city clerk, followed by that will be our city treasurer. If administering those oaths will be Justice, Supreme Court Justice, P. Scott Neville. So I will call Justice up again to administer the oath to the city clerk and the city treasurer.
Madam Clerk, are you ready to have the oath administered? All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States And the Constitution of the State of Illinois And that I will faithfully discharge The duties of the Office Of City Clerk of the City of Calumet To the, to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
And now I will call up our city treasurer, Jerry Tucker. And again, the oath of office will be administered by Supreme Court Justice P. Scott Neville Jr.
Good afternoon, sir. Are you ready to have the oath administered?
I am.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Gerald Tarka.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
The duties of the Office
Duties of the Office.
Of City Treasurer
Of City Treasurer.
Of the City of Calumet City
Of the City of Calumet City.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you've been installed.
Now we will go in order and have each alderman sworn in. Some aldermen have requested judges who have been in their lives and who have been on the road with them in this journey, so we'll introduce those judges. And we're not gonna start a judge showing in Calumet City, we'll go just have a collection of fine judges who, uh, joined us in Calumet City. So we'll start with First Ward Alderman, Michael Navarrete. Administration of oath of office will be Judge T. J. Tyson.
Good afternoon. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I
Aye.
Your name?
Michael Navarrete.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties
Of the Office of Alderman
Of the Office of Alderman.
Of the First Ward of the City of Calumet City
The First Ward of the City of Calumet City.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir, you've been installed.
Now we will have a Second Ward Alderman, Monae Wilson, sworn in by Judge Taisha Smith.
Taisha.
Taisha Smith. So everyone knows in Calumet City, we have the Calumet City Chargers who have done excellent job educating our youth on youth football. Taisha Smith is not only part of the Calumet City Chargers, but Monae Wilson has been there forever with, uh, the football. So we're gonna have her swear in, so I'll step out of the way and you do your thing.
Good morning. For one Calumet City charge of mom to another one. Yes. Are you ready to take this oath?
I am.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I
Aye.
Your name?
Monae S. Wilson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois
Of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
The duties of the Office
The duties of the Office.
Of Alderman
Of Alderman.
Of the Second Ward
Of the Second Ward.
Of the City of Calumet City
Of the City of Calumet City.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
You've been installed.
Next, we will have Third Ward Alderman, DeAndre Tillman, sworn in by Judge D. Renee Jackson.
Good afternoon. Please raise your right hand, our right hands are already raised. Yes, always. Okay, repeat after me, please. I
Aye.
Repeat your name.
DeAndre Tillman.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
The duties of the Office
The duties of the Office.
Of the Alderman of the Third Ward of the City of Calumet City
Of the Alderman of the Third Ward of the City of Calumet City.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you are now installed.
And now we will have Fourth Ward Alderman, Ramon Wilson, also sworn in. Go ahead, you can clap, clap. I didn't say Williams.
Oh, you said Wilson.
Okay, well. Alderman Ramon Williams will be sworn in by Judge D. Renee Jackson again.
Good afternoon. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I
Aye, Ramon V. Williams.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
The duties of the Office
The duties of the Office.
Of Alderman of the Fourth Ward
Of Alderman of the Fourth Ward.
Of the City of Calumet City
Of the City of Calumet City.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Now we have Fifth Ward Alderman, Dewan Gardner being sworn in by Judge D. Renee Jackson. She's working overtime today, so you guys give the judge a round of applause.
Good afternoon, please raise your right hand
Good afternoon.
And repeat after me. I
Aye.
State your name.
Dewan Gardner.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge
I will faith, and that I will faithfully discharge
The duties of the Office
The duties of the Office.
Of the Alderman of the Fifth Ward
Of the Alderman of the Fifth Ward.
Of the City of Calumet City
Of the City of Calumet City.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we have Sixth Ward Alderman, James J. R. Patton. Now we'll have to ask the alderman to introduce his judge.
Judge Jonathan Clark Green?
Yes.
Took the kids, 'cause the little one was acting up.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, um, could you please, uh, raise your right hand and repeat after me? I
Aye.
State your name.
James Patton.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
The duties of the Office
Duties of the Office.
Of Alderman of the Sixth Ward
Of Alderman of the Sixth Ward.
Of the City of Calumet City
Of the City of Calumet City.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And finally, we have Seventh Ward Alderman, Anthony Smith, who will be sworn in by
Okay, good afternoon, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I
Aye.
State your name.
Anthony Smith.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
The duties of the Office
Duties of the Office.
Of Alderman of the Seventh Ward
Of Alderman of the Seventh Ward.
Of the City of Calumet City
Of the City of Calumet City.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Before I ask any city officials, well, actually, Madam Clerk, can you please call forth?
Alderman Navarrete.
Here.
Alderman Wilson. Here. Tillman.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
And before I ask, uh, the elected officials and turn them over to thank their family, I would like to introduce elected officials who are here with us. And also, I would just like to say, uh, thank you to my family and all of my supporters who have been here with me, cried with me, laughed about me when I had my hair grow a little and actually prayed with me. So I want to introduce my family before I introduce elected officials. Then you met my wife, Suprema Jones, I'll start from the end, my sister Crystal Johnson my mother Devola Johnson my son Thaddeus Martin Young my other son Preston Jones, Preston Montana my mother Siri Morgan, Siri in the back we have my brother Jasmine Jones my niece Shaquana my nephew Isaiah my niece Joy my nephew Taylor, Taylor Jones and this is my adopted son, and he's with us all the time, Chris Well, I ain't gonna introduce many others, but let me start by also introducing elected officials who are here, and then I'll turn it over to our elected officials to say a few words. We have from the village of Vernon, Mayor Robert Pope we also have from the village of Harvey, Mayor Christopher Clark we have my good friend Donna Springfield, my seatmate, uh, she has, she's ride or die, State Representative Rita Mayfield we also have Corinne Davis, who I heard is gonna get appointed to School Board Member 151 Gary DePew, he's the Highway Commissioner, he's in the back and last but not least, uh, you know, I started in my political organization in Orange Township, learned a lot about politics, uh, I stopped using the F-word because I learned a lot of that in, uh, Orange Township. But I want to introduce, uh, not only my friend, but, uh, who's been, uh, taught me politics, supervisor Frank Cirelli and so we also have from the village of Lynnwood, the mayor of Lynnwood, is it Jada?
Jada.
I didn't say Jada as a question, I said, is Jada here? Jada started off Jada, but has been my friend for thirty years, we have both virgos and Harvey back and forth. But Jada, congratulations that you were the village of Lynnwood.
Trustee from East Hazel Press.
Trustee, I'm sorry, from the village of East Hazel Press, Maureen Forte. And also from, uh, the village of Lynnwood, Erin Lee Delvonne, the city clerk and this gentleman who is doing photography, but he's also a trustee in the village of Dalton, N S D.
Jason House from Dalton.
I, I don't have complete real, so Jason House, also a trustee from the village of Dalton. At this time, I'll turn it over to our elected officials for a few words, I'll start off with our city clerk, Neil T. Pigs.
Good afternoon, everybody, thank you all so much for coming out. It is wonderful to see so many beautiful faces on this day, thank you for supporting us and believing in us. So, um, I did not prepare a speech, but I told everyone they had to send me their speeches, so that's funny, right? So first I want to thank God, right, 'cause without him, there's nothing possible, right? There's, all things happen through him, so I want to thank him first. I would like to thank my family, um, I would like to thank my friends, my friends who are there for me and support me. I would like to thank my staff, uh, the city clerk's office, the entire staff, they work hard, they work diligently, and, um, they just really work hard for all the residents of the City of Calumet City, so I would like to thank them. Um, to my city council members, I'm so excited to be working with you, some of you again, and, uh, Ms. Alderman Wilson, new, she's gonna be my, uh, new girl power on the council. Welcome, I'm looking forward to working with you and building with you. Um, I am dedicated to the residents of City of Calumet City, I am dedicated to being, um, the best city clerk that I can be to continue to serve you with Um, I am dedicated to the residents of City of Calumet City, I am dedicated to being the best City Clerk that I can be to continue to serve you with transparency, with integrity. And just to the very best of my ability. To my mayor, new mayor, congratulations and welcome. And I look forward to working with you on this administration to make Calumet City a better place. To all of the employees of Calumet City, I appreciate you every day, all day. You guys execute the ideas that are created in this room. You guys enforce the laws, rules, regulations, and ordinances in this room, and I appreciate you all. And so, thank you all so very much. I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
I was told we have to, I have to speak in the mic, so I will speak in the mic. Our City Treasurer, Jerry Tarkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to begin by acknowledging the presence of my son, August, and his friend Colette, our Accounting Department Coordinator, Diana Gonzalez, and our I T Department Head, Rick Bohovski. Thank you all for being here today. I would also like to acknowledge my Deputy Treasurer, Nicole Rutter, and our A P Clerk, Bernadette Fortuna. Thank you all for what you do to keep the Finance Department and the city as a whole running smoothly. Each election that I've been involved in has its own characteristics, its own identity. This past election is no exception. Being both one in a long string of elections for some and a truly historic event for others. Certainly, this election was unique unto itself. We are ten individuals chosen from thirty-six thousand residents of our city and trusted with this great honor to serve in the best interest of our neighbors, friends, family, and the many individuals that we're yet to meet. This responsibility, this awesome gift, does not sit lightly with me. As your treasurer, I will continue to take very seriously the trust that you, the residents of the City of Calumet City, have bestowed upon me. I will never take that trust or that responsibility of my office lightly during this global pandemic and this global economic slowdown that we find ourselves in. I pledge to do everything in my power to facilitate the continued smooth operation of your municipal government and to keep our newly-elected mayor and the City Council informed as to the status of the city's finances, so that together, we can make responsible decisions on spending and budgeting. We all get involved in politics because we think that we can do some good, make a difference. So too is it with this group of individuals here gathered for the first time today. I see great potential as I look around the room. We have a good mix of bright new ideas and perspectives alongside some seasoned veterans. It's a good mix, and I look forward to begin the people's work with every, and each and every one of you here today. Truly, there is much to be done. At this time, I would like to extend my hand of friendship to all of my colleagues. To those that have been here before, I offer you my continued spirit of cooperation. To those of you who are newly-elected, I say, welcome aboard. We may not always agree, but we should always agree to listen to one another. To the residents of the place that I have called home for my entire life, I thank you once again for your continued support and encouragement throughout the years. As always, I will do my best to serve the residents of Calumet City with dignity and integrity, because you deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Before I go to the First Ward Alderman, I would like, I skipped a step. So I would ask my sons to lead us in the Pledge of Legions. I would ask everyone to stand up and lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions.
Uh, excuse me, we would like for everybody to silence their phones, please.
So if everyone didn't hear the announcement by the clerk, if you could please silence your phone, we have a couple more items, and then we'll let you guys get back to the celebration. I would all like to recognize First Ward Alderman, Michael Navarrete, for some words, and then we'll go in order with our Alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to begin just by congratulating all the elected officials sworn in today. Of course, I am very excited to continue the work that we've been working on and hear the new perspectives and ideas. I think it's needed here in Calumet City, so I'm open to it and I'm excited about it. My journey as Alderman started four years ago. I was born and raised here. I do a lot for the church, and I think that was the platform that ultimately led me to this seat. It has been a tremendous honor to serve the First Ward, to give back to the community that raised me. It's a lot different from when I grew up here, but I think the council worked very hard to, over these last four years, with four new Aldermen and new ideas, to get things moving in different directions, to collaborate with those that were here for some time before us. It was a great partnership, and that's been the motto of the First Ward, is partnerships. So I would like to start just by thanking a lot of those partnerships. Joe Zotto of School District 155, Catherine Stern, who sits on that board, has been a great ally in helping us talk about the issues that are in the schools. The VFW, been close with to revitalize them, and partnerships with Home Depot to get grants to revitalize the VFW. Saint Victor's and all the churches. Saint Victor unfortunately closed as my alma mater, and it was probably the hardest, hardest thing during my time here as an alumni, to see Saint Victor close and to try everything to keep it open. But the situation just wasn't in the cards for it to continue to be a church. But we are partnering with the Archdiocese, we are partnering with other organizations to make sure that Saint Victor continues to serve the First Ward and the neighborhood, and continues to be a beacon of leadership and diversity. Also, like to thank the Park District for all their support and all their collaborations. There's a lot of assets in the First Ward. I'm excited to be the Alderman of the First Ward. It's the oldest part of town, so we have our issues. I think the Fifth Ward and Alderman Gardner is one of my good allies. We've worked very hard, as our wards share a lot of the same symptoms. So to continue that work and continue to get the support of the council, the new mayor, and to hear the ideas that you all have is very exciting. And as you can tell, it's a lot of work. We've done a Burnham revitalization plan. Our economic development has been great. So Burnham Avenue, we completed that plan, partnered with UIC's Great Cities. The State Street revitalization, we have an industrial corridor here on State Street in the First Ward. So, there's a lot of work that goes into being an Alderman, and I think that was the one thing I learned very quickly four years ago. And the sacrifice that it takes is on family, so I want to thank my family. My wife Cynthia, my son, Michael, my daughter Josefina, my godson, Jonathan, and of course, my parents, my father who's here today, who's helped guide me through it. It's a lot of sacrifice, it's a lot of time, it's very well worth it, and I'm very excited to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Navarrete, and congratulations. We have Second Ward Alderman, Monae Wilson.
Hello, good afternoon. Oh, good afternoon. I would like to first start by thanking Mayor Jones for adding himself to the list of firsts and examples for my sons to look up to. Thank you for that. I'm gonna try to make, make it through this without crying, but this is such an important day. It is multi-layers of history in this room. I'd like to thank the Honorable Taisha Smith, because we are football moms, and it meant a lot to me to have her swear me in, because our kids in Calumet City can see what they can be, and we have to be very careful what we show them. I would like to thank my mother, trustee Maureen Forte of East Hazelcrest. Years ago, she was elected the first black trustee in her area, and now her daughter is the first black alderwoman in a hundred and twenty-eight-year history of Calumet City. I would like to thank my sister, who only thirty days ago could not walk. We live with multiple sclerosis, so every day is a challenge in some way, and I'm happy that she made it up those stairs and is in this audience today. Thank you to my sister-in-law, my brother-in-law, and my niece for always supporting me and supporting our family. I appreciate you all. I would like to thank our City Clerk, Yoda Figs, for being the example of what strength and leadership is. I'm almost coming to a close. If you all saw those fine young men in those blue suits and orange bow ties, I would like my family to stand, my husband and my two boys. My sons are born and raised in Calumet City. I have Cortland, Cortland II, and Chase Wilson. Today is also National Decision Day for high school seniors. My son attends Thornwood High School. He plays on the varsity football team, and today, he has selected to attend Morehouse College in the fall. Last but not least, I would like to thank the residents of the Second Ward. Thank you for electing me to be your voice. It is our voice for our ward, and we will do this together, one step at a time. I don't know what I don't know, so we gonna learn it together. Thank you, and God bless Calumet City.
So everybody in the room know who's gonna be the crier in here, right? He's gonna be making me cry at the council meeting, so. But thank you, Alderman Wilson. Congratulations, and on your historic election, we're gonna work together and make sure we bring this city back. Next, I'd like to introduce Third Ward Alderman, DeAndre Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did some mental math, and if everybody take five to ten minutes speaking, we'll be here all day, so I'll try to keep this one short. First and foremost, I would like to thank God. Secondly, I would like to thank my family who's sitting over here. I have my sister, Deja, my other sister, Destiny, and both of my parents. I sit in this seat because of my parents. A lot of you all who may not know this, I was forced to knock on doors and campaign when I was twelve, and the passion apparently stuck with me. And most importantly, I would like to thank the Third Ward residents who re-elected me for another four years. It's humbling to know that the residents appreciate the work that I put in the first four years. I pledge to not have a second year term, or second term slump. I look forward to working with the new administration. Congratulations again to Mayor Jones. He was the first African-American Alderman of Calumet City, and now he's the first African-American mayor of Calumet City. While it is in fact historic, let's not, let's understand that we do have our work cut out for us. And I want the residents to know that me and Mayor Jones have already talked about ways to fix our alleys, programs to combat crime, and ideas to facilitate an economic boom right here in the Southland. We will be dedicated to my hometown, because we know that this can be an economic engine that it has the potential to be. So thank you all, and God bless.
Thank you, Alderman, and congratulations. Alderman Ramon Williams.
Thank you. First can have a God who makes all things possible. I did not prepare a speech traditionally. This is my third term elected. Normally, I prepare a speech, but this term, I did not. So if I forget a name or a person, please charge it to my mind and not my heart. I love you all. I want to acknowledge my, my family, my wife, Shonda, my sister, Naomi, my longtime supporter, Stephanie, and my administrative assistant. I have some residents here, Sherry Tate. I just want to thank you all, and I want to thank you, Mayor Jones. I believe, and I can say this without the permission of anybody else, because I am the senior Alderman, so I don't need permission, but, um, but I think your commitment and your resilience needs to be acknowledged, and it is very commendable, so I think for that, for you to be sitting in that seat as you are, and the road that you traveled to get there is definitely worth a round of applause right now. I'd say I cannot forget to acknowledge one of my mentors in public service, Supervisor Frank Zuccarelli. Thank you very much for being a supporter of mine for my tenure here as the Alderman here in the Fourth Ward and in public service, period. Some twenty-seven, twenty-eight years ago, I met a young man who had the desire to be the Alderman in the Third Ward of Calumet City. And after some, some very long nights, and me destroying one of my parents' pool tables with paint, painting, election signs, he became, Thaddeus became the first African-American Alderman in Calumet City. So, that just lets you know that he and I go back some time, some years. We haven't always seen eye to eye, but I can assure you that I'm here to support you in your, as the senior Alderman on this council, and I look forward to creating the new history that we've started today. So God bless you, and God bless everyone else.
Thank you, Alderman Williams, and congratulations. Look forward to working with you, Fourth Ward residents, to make sure we bring Calumet City. We'd like to acknowledge our Fifth Ward Alderman, Dewan Gardner. Dewan?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a very historic day for Calumet City, and I'm thankful to God first, thankful to my support system, my wife, Crystal Gardner, who always keeps me lifted in prayer. Prayer is very important when you're in leadership. It feels good today to be on the right side of history, and so I'm excited. I look forward to working with all of you on council, the new mayor, the new admin staff. I look forward to working with you all. And I want to thank, from the bottom of my heart, the Fifth Ward residents, everyone that supported me. I will continue good service to the Fifth Ward and continue to be, most importantly, accessible to you all. I want to thank you all so much, and thank you all for coming out and celebrating this historic day with us. Thank you, Mayor.
And before I go on, I forgot to introduce my aunt, Chantan Jackson, and our, my niece, Trinity. So y'all want to stand up? And also, in the back, we have my other adopted son, Devon. Where is Devon at? Like to recognize Sixth Ward Alderman, James J.R. Payden.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank my wife, Molly, and our two sons, Lucas and James, who were both sitting here earlier, but some of you probably heard the younger one screaming, so Molly had to take them and get him settled down. I'd also like to thank my parents, who are not here tonight, but without their guidance throughout my life, I would certainly not be here. I'd like to thank Cook County Judge Jonathan Clark Green. The judge and I, you know, have been down a long road together to help get him on the bench, and so I thought it was only fitting that he be here to swear me in today, because our paths have crossed many times, and I couldn't think of anybody else, you know, that I would like to swear me in. I'd like to congratulate my colleagues here, especially our new mayor. Welcome back to this chamber. Different seat, same building. We haven't, we haven't changed it since he left, but congratulations, Mayor. My first four years on this council, you know, I'm very proud of a lot of the things that we got done in the sixth ward. But most notably, and the thing that I'm most proud of, was finally being able to tear down the dilapidated site at the corner of River Oaks Drive and Wentworth Avenue where Stirk's Grocery Store used to be. That's been a very, you know, an eyesore for the sixth ward for a very long time. And, you know, the city has been trying for years and years to take it down. And I'm glad and I'm proud that we were able to do it during my first term. I look forward to, you know, I've already had conversations with Mayor Jones about, you know, working with our economic development team to find, you know, something to go there. Hopefully, a grocery store, you know, for folks on our end of town. You know, it's a long schlep all the way to Pete's, and I know a lot of people, you know, our tax dollars are leaving to Indiana when it comes to groceries on our end of town. So hopefully, we can, you know, make that a priority in my second four years. I'm looking forward to working with the mayor, with the new mayor, you know, to complete a number of big projects and ideas that I have for the sixth ward. And finally, I'd like to thank the residents of the sixth ward for putting their faith in me for the next four years. You know, I promise I won't let you down, and I will strive every day to be better than I was the day before, to be more accessible, more transparent, and, you know, more able to help. And there is one other person I have to thank today. Former Mayor Michelle Quackenbush. Without her and her leadership and her guidance, I never would have sat in this chair in the first place. And I just want to make sure that I recognize that today as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Paden, and congratulations as well on your victory. Look forward to working with you. We have our seventh ward alderman, Anthony Smith.
Good afternoon, everyone. First and foremost, I thank God Almighty, because I wouldn't be here without Him. And this victory wouldn't have been won without Him. I also thank my friends, my close friends, my close families, associates, Ms. Bridget Bree Burns, my fraternity brothers of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, my sorority sisters of Zeta Phi Beta, and most importantly, most importantly, the residents of the seventh ward of Calumet City for giving me a second chance and a second term. And I look at it as just that, second opportunity. Most importantly for the residents, having their consistent faith that our movement for improvement is actually moving in the right direction. Also, I want to congratulate Mayor Thaddeus Jones, being the first black mayor of Calumet City and overcoming all the obstacles to get to that office. It is truly, it is truly an accomplishment, and I salute you. And I look forward to working with the new mayor. And I also want to congratulate alderwoman Monae Wilson on her victory as well. And I look forward to working with both of you all on many of the continued improvement issues that I've spoken with you all offline about. Everything ranging from bringing better services, better jobs, better industries, better city services, streets, better communication. And as the alderman of the seventh ward, I will be more accessible. I will increase communications, and I will ensure that everyone has my ear, as you do already, at all times. I thank you, and I ask you to adopt my self-motive, which is, never fear, Smith is here, and I am here.
I can see the bumper stickers coming down. I can see the bumper stickers coming down. Thank you, everyone. We are, we are almost done with our program. We have, after our speak, we are gonna go into the business of the city council. I do want to thank and thank the judges. I think the judges deserve a round of applause. Judge Green. Judge G. Renee Jackson, Supreme Court Justice P. Cottonville. Let me, let me start off my speech just by thanking not only my family, my wife, for putting up with all of this madness in politics, my family. But thank the voters of Calumet City. The residents who not only demanded change, but the residents who looked at each alderman and said, "We want to do better in Calumet City." And no slight to the past administration, the residents just wanted to do better. And the residents came out every time and supported each and every person in this room. And without the residents, none of us would be in the positions that we are. So I want to ask everyone to join me in giving a round of applause to all the residents who came out today. Even though we told them it was restricted to COVID, they still came out and got tickets. But I, you know, the residents of Calumet City are here to stay. Residents, especially the longtime residents, you know, have earned a place in all of our hearts. I want to thank the people who have been by my side throughout the years, even when I had hair. I mentioned Frank Zuccarelli. I'll mention my best friend on the side here, Stevonne Grant. I'll mention my best friend, Rob McGee, in the back. My brother, Kevin, Kevin Martin, Danny Drummond, Julie Pierce, who is here. Tiki Yvette Pierce, who was a candidate, and she's also a current park district commissioner in the city of Calumet City. We also have Tanya Reed. Where's Tanya at? Do we have any other school board members or elected officials here today?
My wife, Crystal Gardner, she's in Florida. And also Deborah Sheehan, Deborah Sheehan, the Lincoln Elementary District School.
And we also have Will Tillman, who is school district 149 board member as well. And my, yeah, let's give him a round of applause. I learned, I learned a long time ago to introduce my wife first, otherwise she would get me. You know, today is historic. Today is not only historic for Alderman Monae Wilson, historic for myself, but it's also emotional because many of you don't know that when I was born, I was born with a rare blood disease that allowed me to have seizures. And my mama can tell you that we didn't know if I was gonna make it. And I had those seizures up until I was 13. But it showed me that I was a fighter because along the way, I've had many other issues that God has brought me to this day. And the battles that I've been through in politics, I learned how to pray. And if you, if you don't learn how to pray, then you don't learn how to smile. And, you know, many of you don't know that probably in 2009 or 2008, my car flipped over nine times, ejected me out of, out of the car. It was a gorgeous car. It was a T-top Monte Carlo. It was a, it was a T-top Marley Carlo. And, and I was on Volma Road. My car hit the ramp, flipped over nine times, ejected me 30 feet. And I was unconscious. They took me to hospital, and they did scan after scan after scan. And my mother can tell you, they, they took me back in the room, and when I opened my eyes, and they said, "Ain't nothing wrong with him." And I remember my mother telling me at that point that, boy, God got a plan for you. And my, my father passed away when I was eight years old, and it left a hole in my heart. It left a hole in my heart and left me searching to be the man that, that's before you today. But through the trials and tribulations I had to go through, it left a hole in my heart that I knew I had to be a better father. It prepared me to be a better man, and it also prepared me to be a better servant. And everyone in this room, elected, non-elected, we are all servants of God, servants of the people. And if we ever forget that, we will also be non-elected officials. So one of the first things that I want to implement is we're gonna start a daily prayer line. And we're gonna ask the residents to join us and help us pray for each other and pray to bring Calumet City back. I'm sure you guys know, election after election can leave holes in so many hurt feelings in everyone's heart. And some of those unresolved issues brings us to the point where we start not liking each other, start talking about each other, and start talking bad about the things that we can't do instead of the things that we can do. And politics sometimes has a way, when you lose, when you win, it has a way of having those unresolved issues. And you always have to be a better winner when you lose and learn how to win and make sure that the public and the people are first. And always put God first. And throughout this journey and meeting residents in Calumet City, they talked about two things. They talked about crime, economic development, and actually a better structure of government that we can bring to the people. So as I sit here today as mayor, it's not all about me. I am not here to do a revenge tour because revenge tours don't get us success. We have the greatest opportunity to bring Calumet City back together. And once we do that, and once we have the residents involved, and trust me, residents, you are gonna have to be a part of this administration to do this. You cannot sit on the sidelines and complain and say that I had unresolved issues 20 years ago. Allow our administration the time, the patience to evolve, allow us to get better, but we're gonna ask you to help us get better. So we will be having town hall meetings, we will be having discussions with you. No bad idea will, will, will be turned away. No good idea will be turned away. We want to make sure that we have discussions with each and every one of you. And I can tell you this, that part of what we're gonna do as mayor is I'm gonna establish a council of mayors. I want to take this time now to thank Mayor Michelle Quackenbush. Because Mayor Michelle served the city council as city clerk for 22 years. And slap me if I get the years wrong, but she was clerk for 22 years, and she was mayor for 16, 16 years. And she served this city well and provided us the opportunity to go for it. So I would ask everyone to please give Mayor Michelle a round of applause. And she already told me that she's not going, well, she is going into retirement, but she will be around. And I'm sure we will establish those lines of communication to make sure that we keep our city healthy. I won't go through that, all of the election stuff that happened in the past because many of you know the road that it took to get here. But you also didn't see the hard work behind that. You didn't see the people. You didn't see the residents who prayed and came to our house and talked about a better way for Calumet City, a better way that we can do together in Calumet City. And we are gonna do a better way in Calumet City. Economic development. One of the first things that we're gonna have on our agenda is talking about bringing a casino to Calumet City. And you guys can definitely give a round of applause to that because we're gonna work to bring a casino to Calumet City. So we will work on economic development. We will work on bringing new houses to Calumet City. We will work on crime in Calumet City. We will work on a public service agenda in Calumet City. We will work to repair the relationships that we had that have been broken with our residents. We will do that one step at a time, and my office will always be open to residents. So as we start this new administration, I ask for your patience, I ask for your prayers, and I ask that you uplift each and every alderman and city official that will be, become a part of my administration. It is time that we put down the things that have stopped us from being progressive. It's time that we put down the things that have stopped us from being successful. And it's time that we all work together. I'm ready to go. If you're ready to go, I ask that you join my administration, that you allow us to bring new ideas. It's a new day in Calumet City, and I want to thank you for giving me the confidence in being the mayor of Calumet City. Thank you all. All right, don't leave yet, don't leave yet. We have, we do have business to take care of, so we have. You guys saw the music, he was ready to go. So we, we called a special meeting together. We have two items on our, one, one remaining item on our agenda. The remaining item on our agenda I put forth to the city council, a list of appointments. At the end of that, I will call for one motion for the appointment. I am here in submitting Ansel Glink, PC, for the appointment of corporation counsel for the city of Calumet City for a term to expire on April 30th, 2020. Second, I am here in with submitting Deanne Jeffrey for the appointment of city administrator for the city of Calumet City for a term to expire on April 30th. Third, I am putting, I am here in submitting Randy Velasquez for the appointment of street and alley commissioner for the city of Calumet City for a term to expire on April 30th, 2020. Fourth, I am hearing, 2020, 2022, I'm sorry. Hey, I got water up here. Thank you, guys. For 2022, so I will correct the record and let it reflect 2022. I'm here in submitting Thomas Colash for the appointment of interim police chief for the city of Calumet City for a term to expire on April 30th, 2022. I am here in submitting Andre Black for the appointment of assistant police chief for the city of Calumet City for a term to expire on April 30th, 2022. I am here in submitting Paul Condit for the appointment of crime-free housing coordinator for the city of Calumet City for a term to expire on April 30th, 2022. I am hearing, here in submitting Cheryl Tillman for the appointment of director of inspectional services for the city of Calumet City for a term to expire on April 30th. You guys ain't clapping for me, but you're clapping. Go ahead, Cheryl. I am here in submitting Sean Howard for the appointment of spokesperson and media manager for the city of Calumet City for a term to expire on April 30th, 2020. I am hearing, 2022, I'm sorry. Let the record reflect that correction. Lastly, I am here in submitting Val Williams for the appointment of grant facilitator consultant for the city of Calumet City for a term to expire on April 30th, 2022. I would ask for one motion and recognize Alderman Gardner.
Mayor, I'd like a motion, to make a motion to group all of the appointments together in one motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner is the second to the motion.
I'll second.
Motion seconded by Alderman Monae Wilson. Madam, Madam Clack, will you call the roll, please?
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Present.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Hat?
Present.
Smith?
Yes.
Neverette?
Present.
The motion passes, and congratulations to all of the officials in Calumet City. I think my wife won't be acknowledged the gift that she gave me. You want me to open it? Okay, I'm sorry. Let me finish the official business, and then we'll open it. So we have the officials in the back. I just want to recognize in the back, we have the new interim chief. Colash is in the back, Kevin Colash. We also have in the back our fire chief, Chief Becker, Botchuk. I always get that. He's gonna get me. And our new assistant chief, Andre Black. So as my intention is to work with the council in a collaborative manner, so we're gonna have continued discussions about the appointments, so the aldermen are involved in the process. We want to make sure that we are transparent in what we do for the residents and how we bring Calumet City back and our structure of government. Part of that is including the alderman in the decision-making. the Alderman in the decision-making, and also including the Alderman in how we bring our city back. So I'm looking forward to those discussions. We'll continue to have those discussions. So if you guys don't mind, I would like to open my wife's gift in public, because that, that concludes the business. But let me open the gift. Please give me a minute. Trying to be nice about it. Thank you, wife. So we have to officially, official, we'll, First Lady of Calumet City, Suprema Jones. Listen, I want to thank you guys all for coming out. I know you could have stayed home. We definitely want to be mindful of COVID. We've asked residents to restrict coming here today. This will be live streamed, so residents can see it. But we also want to be thankful for the residents, and we will definitely continue to practice social distancing, even though all y'all close together. And make sure that we keep our residents and, and safety as, at the forefront. I will ask everyone, if you're having celebrations, please practice social distancing. Please be safe. We will not be having a celebration today, but we will, we'll be announcing a community celebration where all the residents can come out and celebrate not only this historic election, but also to the people who want to be a part of Calumet City Government. I am gonna be a mayor for everyone. Everyone knows I didn't get the majority of the vote in Calumet City. But to those who voted, who didn't vote for me, I'm still gonna be a mayor for everyone. Because the time of the past is gone, and I want to make sure that I acknowledge that we have a lot of work to do. So let's go. Let's get excited. And I would just ask the DJ to play the song and thank you guys all for coming out.
Gotta make a motion. Gotta motion. Gotta make a motion.
I'm sorry. Is there a motion to adjourn? I was getting...
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Payden, seconded by Alderman Smith. Meeting adjourned at... All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 1:30 PM.